Oh my god.
Okay, everybody, starting session three and we have our nursing graduate Mikey, the genius here to answer some questions today. What up, Mikey?
Hey, what's up, Jack?
How's it going?
My question.
He is sure and he is going to share all this wisdom and knowledge with us about everything med search or whatever he wants to share. How to survive nursing school one-on-one, whatever it is, because he did it. He is the man, so we are here. Mikey, you have the floor. Rock and roll.
Alright, hey guys, I hope you're doing well amid this pandemic, okay? So I'm just gonna make it real quick because med search one itself is a big topic, you know, it's not just a topic, it's a, it's a bunch of topics, it's a collection of topics. And I would say med search one was one of the hardest med search that I had. Because it's, I think for me chronic, because med search one is chronic, so I think for me chronic diseases are harder than acute diseases because chronics, chronic diseases, you have to know the past, the present and the future. You know what I mean?
Okay.
As compared to acute ones, acute ones are now, sometimes a little bit on the future, but it's more of the now, you know what I mean? So for med search one, first tip would be read, no, first tip would be use the ADPI. So you have to know how to use assessment, diagnosis, you know, those kind of stuff. So first assessment, you have to know how to assess the diseases. As an, for an example, diabetes, COPD. I'm just gonna give you a rundown of the diseases that I can remember in med search one. There actually not a lot, there are not a lot, but usually chronic, so asthma, COPD, diabetes, heart failure. What else? CKD, chronic kidney disease. And some neuro stuff, so all of your neurological diseases would be the ones that are chronic, so Alzheimer's, Parkinson's, you know, those kind of stuff. So first thing you want to do is you want to know how to assess that disease. What are the things you need to assess on those diseases? So that's how you use assessment, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Second would be nursing diagnosis. So for nursing diagnosis, it's not much, it's not much on how to diagnose, how to come up with a nursing diagnosis, but more on the priority, like what's, what's your priority if you have this patient? Like if you have two patients who has, or you have three patients who has three chronic diseases, what kind of diagnosis you do, you tackle first, you know what I mean? So for nursing diagnosis, make sure you know airway, breathing, circulation and disability. Make sure that you know, you know that airway always, always comes first. Okay?
Okay, that, that makes a lot of sense. I know my mom has brought that up to you a lot.
What's next?
Airway, breathing, circulation.
Well, next would be because I'm pulling out my med search.
No problem, take your time. Absolutely. I just very, very grateful. Thank you so much, Mikey, seriously.
You got it. Uh, let's see, here we go. So planning, 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 you don't really use planning, not that much as just a nurse, because you usually plan with a multi-discipline. You know, you plan with a doctor, you plan with everyone. So it's good to, good to know, maybe more on the clinical setting, but I kind of want you to like focus on passing the exam. Because, you know, there's, like, there's no way you can't pass nursing if you're not gonna pass the exam. Even, you know, no matter how good you are. I kind of want to like focus on, on how to answer your exams. Because med search one is the med search where you start answering NCLEX-based questions.
Okay.
It's not gonna be on the knowledge-based questions anymore. They're not gonna ask you, you know, what's next to the right atrium, you know, those kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Then they're, they're going to ask you, who do you see first, those kind of stuff, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Like, what kind of, what kind of patient needs you first, those kind of stuff. So for planning, just keep in mind that it would include priorities, prioritization.
Okay.
So you have to plan, like plan your, your time. So who do you see first for planning? Which kind of patients would you delegate to LVNs? To CNAs?
Yeah.
Which kind of situation you would need to call your charge nurse? Alright?
Yeah.
But this is a, I'll give you a golden tip. On NCLEX, they usually don't like passing the bucket, is that what you call it? So if you see a, if you, if you see a question on, maybe on your exam, but most likely on NCLEX, if you see a question about this patient is having this kind of stuff, what are you gonna do? And your choices would be call the charge nurse, call the LVN, do nothing, and then a nursing intervention? You always want to pick the nursing intervention. No matter, sometimes, no matter how much it does not make sense, that is the answer.
Can you figure it out on your own? Seriously?
Hates passing the work to other people.
Yeah.
They always want test takers to make a nursing intervention, you know what I mean? But sometimes, some questions does not need interventions. So for those questions, you want, you need to know your norms. What's your normal blood pressure?
Got it.
What's your normal heart rate, you know what I mean, those kinds of stuff? So that's planning. Next would be intervention. This one's pretty straightforward. So what, good thing about your book, it's already, do you have the book now?
Yeah.
I mean, you already. So, think about your book, heard this diseases, it's gonna give you ADPI. It's gonna give you assessment, diagnosis, intervention, evaluation and the outcome.
Yeah, it's actually pretty cool, like for a lot of the chapters, it's listed like that.
Yes, yes, that's gold. That's like, that's the only thing I studied in ICU.
The charts are helpful, like especially with like the way they broke out some of the drugs and stuff, you know, and they're like, this drug does this for, you know, VTAC, blah, 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 and I was just like, yay!
Drugs too in a bit, but like I said, I will say for interventions, just make sure you know what interventions you do.
Okay.
With the diseases. It's, it's pretty straightforward, you know what I mean?
Okay.
So and that's, that's gonna be the topic where chronic thinking comes in. Because sometimes chronic patients, you have to know what's expected or unexpected. Because chronic patients will always have symptoms because they have this disease and it's been happening chronically. For example, a COPD patient who's having a shortness of breath. It sounds like it's something that you have to do something right now, but in reality, COPD, they will be shorter breath.
Right, that makes.
So it's unexpected, you know what I mean? So usually that's not the answer. Because COPD patients will have weakness of breath. So, but that's just one example, but the concept would be know what's expected or not expected in each chronic diseases.
So then like basically, if we would be looking for what stands out that's in addition to it, that's causing like more of a problem kind of a thing, like that's really sticking out, like if for a chronic disease.
Yeah.
You're standing correctly.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's a really, thanks for pointing that out, because you know, when you run across all these different disorders, as you know, it's like, there's so many that have the same list of stuff and you're like, oh gosh, okay, so what is unique to each thing? And then also like you're saying, yeah, what's, how do you know that it's worsening? And that's something I hadn't even thought about with the whole chronic thing. How do you know that it's getting worse? What's the key? And so that's brilliant. Thank you. Yeah.
So this is how you're gonna do it. First, you're going to, so we're, we're going down ADPI, right? Now we're in intervention. So for intervention, first you're gonna think, is it expected or not expected? That's the first thing you do. And then if, if it's unexpected, it means it's worsening, but that's this worsening symptom pertains to this disease, you know what I mean, like?
Right, right.
COPD patient, having COPD patient is having nystagmus, like you know, the, the thing of the eye. So that's where you, that's where you like think, COPD patients does not get nystagmus, so it's not the right answer, you know what I mean? So
Right, right.
About the, if you see the worsening answer, you have to make sure that that worsening symptom is related to the disease.
Oh, that makes sense. Okay, perfect. Or yeah.
If it's not, the right answer too.
Right, right.
So implementation, you have to make sure, first step is expected or unexpected.
Okay.
Step would be if it's unexpected, is it associated to that disease?
That makes.
And if it is, that's the right answer.
Thank you so much. That is so helpful. Seriously, thank you.
Alright, so last one would be evaluation. Evaluation is pretty much so a good evaluation would be if the patient already has normal vital signs or the patient is getting better.
Yes.
So evaluation question would be what, for example, like what are, what parameters would tell you that this patient is getting better? So to be honest, if you check all of your answers and if you see numbers that are good, most likely that's the answer.
Yeah.
Then again, another step you would do would be associate those answers to your questions.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because if you have a question that's about diabetes and you're looking at an answer that says, patient is not having shortness of breath anymore. That's not diabetes, so that's not the answer, you know what I mean? But if you see, if you see an answer that says, patient is, patient's last blood sugar is ninety, ninety, you know, mg per DL. Now that's the answer, because your patient now has better blood, blood sugar.
Right.
Those kind of stuff.
So just keep.
So.
The disease, perfect.
Mm-hmm, so for, you know, answering med search questions, I would highly suggest use your ADPI. And I would also highly suggest know the topic of your, know, know the type of your question. If you see a question, you have to ask yourself, is this an assessment question? Is this an implementing, implementation question?
Oh, perfect.
Is this a diagnosing question, or is this an evaluation question? Those kind of stuff. That's the first thing you do.
Brilliant.
You identify the type of the question.
Thank you so much for breaking that down, because you know what, I've run across a couple of questions like that, like last class, and that sort of threw me for a loop a little bit, because you know, you're not even used to thinking like that when you first start out, you're like, wait, what? And, and you start to realize what that is as you go along. Super helpful.
I was the worst, I'm telling you.
That, thank you so much. That is so helpful to think about it like that, just to break it down, what type of question are we dealing with? What category in ADPI? Beautiful.
Yes, so always, always think about, med search would be chronic, 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 chronic.
Okay.
Um, I think everything's chronic except your BLS or ACLS. So every med search, no, med search one and med search three, which is ICU, you guys will always do cardiovasc, cardio-pulmonary resuscitation.
Okay, yeah.
That, that's gonna be your strips.
Yeah, the whole.
Yeah, so you know, yep, so your strips are usually acute, but there are some strips that are chronic, like atrial fibrillation could be chronic.
Okay.
But it could all, you know what I mean?
Okay.
So I would say that your strips, study your strips very well. Don't dedicate time to master the numbers on the strip, but dedicate your time on identifying what, what, what each, what each diseases or strips look like. And then from that, you have to know what intervention are you gonna do. For strips, usually there's not a lot of assessment, but there's more of intervention.
That makes a lot of sense. Yeah, like that's where that medication stuff I was reading about comes in, a lot of, a lot of the different.
Oh, then you talk about medication.
Oh, yeah.
For medication, my tip would be study the categories. That's the only tip that I can give you, because don't study, yeah, don't study them like one by one. It's not gonna work, it's not going to, I tried it. I tried 24 hours studying just one by one, then stick.
Did it, I know, it's the hardest thing to get stuck in your brain, I'm serious, like I'm just like, oh my gosh, when it comes to medicine, it is so hard. I just diagrammed out like a list of the cardiac ones and I was like, there's already eighteen and I just got started, like, oh my god. Of course, they're the eighteen most important ones, but you're just like, really? It's a lot.
You know what? Yes, to be honest, this is how I did it. So, you know, let's, let's just narrow, let's narrow it down to cardiac meds.
Sure, yeah.
So for cardiac meds, you have your beta blocker, ACE inhibitors, ARDS, those kind of stuff. And we all know that each category has their own stuff, they have their uniqueness, you know? Like for ACE inhibitors, usually they end with Pril.
Yes.
And for beta blockers, they usually they end with LOL.
Yes.
ARDS, usually they end with Sartan, those kind of stuff.
Right, that's right, I remember now.
Oh, you can start, yeah, you can start there, you can start doing that. And then after you kind of master that, go to each category, for example, beta blockers. And then I would research, I would just go to Google and put, what are the top ten or five most used beta blockers?
Yes, that makes a lot of sense.
So since, you know, we only have six months or maybe less of med search.
Right.
Alright, so since we have, you know, less than six months of med search, what I would do, I would start studying the top ten medicine in that category.
Perfect, perfect.
And move on to another category and study the top ten, you know, top ten medicines in that category, and then do the same thing in, you know, in each category.
Yeah, I like that.
If you have more time, if you have more time and you have more brain cells, then you can go back and then study the other ones that are not really famous, you know what I mean? Because.
Brain cells are valuable.
Study each medicines, we're not pharmacists, we're nurses, you know?
Right, I was like that Einstein quote of never memorize anything, you can look up in a book, just keeps, I'm like, shut up Einstein, I have to memorize this anyways, but it's like hard. It's tough, yeah, yeah.
Well, as nurses were obliged to know that at least the most famous ones.
Yes.
Because those are the things that we will see in the hospital, those kind of stuff. So that's how I do it, I would go from category.
Docs and things like that, the big, big ones, yeah.
I would go from category to the top ten most famous.
Okay.
And then if you see, if you see something you don't know on the exam, for example, you see a medicine and then first thing you look at is the prefix.
Okay.
Because if you know your top ten beta blocker, then you should know the prefix. And then boom, if you don't know the prefix, then you go to the suffix.
Okay.
Because the reason why you will know the prefix is because it's not in the top ten. So now you're gonna, you're going to, right? Now you're going to use your plan B, you're gonna go to your suffix and see if it's a LOL, if it's a Sartan, if it's a Pril. Then for example, you see a LOL, then boom, that's a beta blocker.
There you go.
Right?
Yeah.
So since you're a good student, you're going to study what are the side effects of a beta blocker?
Exactly, exactly, the grouped side effects of all those things, which is helpful.
Yes.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense.
Well, that's how I studied medications.
That's, that's what I was thinking, that was honestly what I came to this week, was I was like, I was looking at the front of the Davis book and it has like a lot of that classification stuff and some details, some of it's kind of, you know, to be quite frank, dense. But I was like, okay. So you memorize kind of like what's the gist of it and then go down from there on the main drugs. That was my plan, so I'm glad to know I'm like heading towards the right course. Haven't conquered it yet, but at least I'm going the right way. Yeah.
You are, you are, you are.
That's good, that's good to know. Thank you so much, that was super, super helpful.
Yeah, you got it. Do you have any more questions that I could probably answer?
Yeah, absolutely. Let me get over to my email really quick. Letty wanted to know, here's, let's see, she wanted to know, okay, so you went over what we needed to know about EKGs, which is good, she wanted to know about that. If there's anything else you want to throw in, is there anything else you want to throw in about the EKGs before I move on? She has kind of a list, sorry.
Well, med search one EKG would be the basics, so get a good grasp of the, the numbers, because you know, the EKG has, you know, each, each boxes has this kind, the second point two or point.
Yes, yes. You know what I related it to? This is great. I found it was, the, the regular strip was related to teaspoons and milliliters, that was how I sort of anchored it in my brain. Yeah, I was like, oh my gosh, teaspoons and milliliters, because you could think about the boxes like that and the, and the seconds like that, it helped. There's, otherwise, if I don't have something to relate it to, it's not gonna stay, you know, I was just like, numbers, but numbers.
Whatever works, not that.
Exactly. So remember, so let me ask you a quick question while we're on that then, so is basically, because I've heard things have changed over the years, is basically med search one, two and three, is it kind of like a lot of the same material, but it's being broken up into chunks now, like basics, a little bit more intense than majorly intense? Or how is it working on that whole memorization?
No.
Yeah.
One, med search one is chronic.
Okay.
Med search two is a mixture of chronic and acute, but it's more on the GI.
Okay, got it, got it.
So think of med search two as what's this? An overflow, there you go. Med search two overflow, so it's going to be the GI, the, the I's. But more in the GI, oh reproductive, reproductive.
Oh, okay, got it, yeah.
Med search two. Med search three would be your med search one, but acute.
Oh, thank you so much for explaining that to me, because like, like a long, long time ago, in a galaxy far, far away, my mom went to nursing school and she's like, I remember it being grouped by just like organ systems and I'm like, oh, I don't think it's going that way now, so it's just helpful to hear it, how it's all broken down. Thank you so much for explaining that. Yeah, and her next question was, what are a few things we should know about for the start of OB? So she's talking about OB as well, is there anything in particular that you want to throw out there as far as OB goes?
Right, well, let me finish the EKG, but I think I answered her question. But for the, for EKG, just make sure you know, yeah, just to make sure you know interventions for the, for each diseases, you have to know the interventions and the medications. Because we all know, we all know the intervention, it's gonna be cardio-pulmonary resuscitation, right?
Yes.
But you have to know when to do CPR.
Yes.
You have to know when to do CPR and you have to know what meds and how much are you giving?
Okay.
And how often are you giving? So make sure you know CPR, how much meds, what kind of meds are you giving for each diseases or strip? And when are you gonna do CPR and also what are the instances that you need to defibrillate?
Perfect.
Those are the ones for, yep, so for EKG, it's not, it's not just gonna be knowledge-based, but it's gonna be more critical thinking. It's gonna be what are you gonna do with this strip? They're gonna give you a strip and they're gonna be like, so what are you gonna do with this strip? You know?
Yeah.
Those kind of stuff.
Think fast.
Okay, for OB, honestly, OB would be a breeze. And hopefully you guys get clinical experience for OB, because that's the time you, you start IVs in OB.
Oh, thank you for letting me know, we were wondering about that, we were actually gonna start doing all the IVs and stuff. So do we not do IV pushes and blood in med search one? Do we not do that?
No, you, you guys will, are you gonna do OB first or?
I'm doing a second, I'm doing a second, I'm starting with med search. But Letty, starting with OB, which is why she's asking, because she's like, she, she wanted to start with med search, but you know, there were only like so many slots. So she's doing OB first and I'm doing med search first and I'm in this one.
Yeah, cool. Yeah, so for med search, I think you're gonna start doing the piggybacks and the, the pump, IV pump.
Okay.
Ms. Dickinson will send you an, an instruction video.
Oh, good.
That's gonna be me, by the way, that's my video.
Thank you, I like to begin with videos, please send me videos.
Demonstrating it, just so you guys know.
That's great.
So yeah, it's gonna be a video of how to start an IV pump, how to hang IVs, you know, those kinds of stuff. And for OB, you know what, for OB, I wouldn't really stress about it.
Yeah.
Because you will have, Ms. Jacobs, she's really nice, she's very helpful, very knowledgeable. Also, she would always help you out if you have questions, but there's not a lot of topic in OB, to be honest. It's not like med search, usually for OB, it's usually premature birth.
Okay.
Bleeding, infection.
Okay, so like, so if she focused on those types, I would probably be a good head start.
Yeah, yeah.
That's great.
Because you don't start with anomalies until pediatrics, you know, those kind of like for the heart and everything. But for OB, it's because of the mom.
Okay, so it's pretty much just the mom, it, it, does it ever really deal with the, just with the fetus or no? Not really, more just the.
You do, you do deal with the fetus, but you treat the symptom of the mom. Because you're not, you know, you're not gonna, you're not gonna have a symptom of the fetus, but it's always, it always reflects to the mom.
Okay.
So if the mom, or the monitor, so you will gonna, you're gonna have a fetal heart rate monitor?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's gonna reflect on the contractions, on the heartbeat of the baby. Good thing to remember and to know is you have to know that a baby's heart rate is really high. Like it could go, I don't know, like really high. You have to know that, because that's the usual mistake of new nursing students. You, yeah, it's not a lot of topic in OB, it's usually infection, bleeding, bleeding is really big, bleed.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
You don't want your mom to bleed out to death.
Yeah.
If you see bleeding, you do. If it's between pain, infection, bleeding, it's always bleeding.
Makes complete sense, because of hemorrhaging, right? Like for hemorrhaging out, now, got it. It makes a lot of sense, and I think that can happen really fast, right?
It does, yeah.
Yeah, if, if not, if somebody doesn't do something about it real quick.
Yeah, and if you think about it, if, if you're receiving a mom from post-operation, C-section or even normal birth, they've already lost so much blood.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Or they're bleeding until the next day with like really big chunks, that's not good.
Yeah, good point. Thank you so much, that's super helpful. Let's see. Is there anything else you want to say about OB, Mikey, before I move on, or are you ready for the rest?
Um, I think that's it, I, I cannot think of anything else for OB, it's, it's very very narrow subject, so I think you guys are gonna be good.
And she said, okay, so basically, anything else you have to offer about the chap? And she said, uh, okay, so basically, anything else you have to offer um, about the chapters? Oh, she wanted to know um, which ones from the Hoffman we should know, how to know what's important and what's not. And she said, thank you in advance, smiling face. Yeah.
You're welcome.
She's such a, she would be here. She's been here.
I know, she's awesome.
Oh, I was like, I can't believe you can't make it. Yeah.
Yeah. I like when students like, like some of your classmates would email me or like send me a message. I don't, some of them I don't know, but I I like it because that's how you learn. You ask questions.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I was probably meditating when I was a nursing student, because I would email people, like, hey, could you help me?
That's how you survive and learn. It's like you gotta ask to know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, you know what? I promised myself that I'm doing this to like my seniors. I'm gonna let, you know, my juniors to do this to me, because, you know, they helped me out too, so paid forward.
Uh, thank you so much, Mikey. Super appreciate it. I appreciate people like you.
I'm open question again for Hoffman, right?
Yeah, so let me go over that again, because I know it's kind of chunk. It says, so obviously, any advice you have to offer, so anything else you want to throw in. About the chapters, which ones from Hoffman should we know specifically, I guess? Um, how to know what's important and what's not, uh, and that's pretty much it. So I think, I think some of that, I know you kind of addressed, but if there's anything else that you want to throw in there that might be of super benefit, go for it.
So studying the Hoffman, we're lucky, we have Hoffman. Hoffman is a very precise book. It's a very concise book. It's not like it's very broad. The disadvantage of Hoffman would be sometimes there are stuff that are not, um, I can't say not complete, but it's just, it's just very explained, it's too layman's term, you know what I mean?
Yes, I do know exactly.
I actually like that, but I do my research, even though I've already read it. But the good thing about Hoffman is it's very concise. So I would, I would read the whole chapter.
Yes.
Honestly, the whole chapter. Do not skip.
Yeah.
I don't want to say everything is important. Well, everything is important.
That is exactly what I said too, and I felt bad saying it. I was like, I hate to say that every word is important, but I read every word. And I'm like, but every word's important in this book. Like, they've literally consolidated it down like that. That's the same thing I.
Oh, I would, I would read the whole chapter.
Okay.
I don't want to team on it, but actually read it and understand the content. And then go back to your pathophysiology. This is how I did it. Pathophysiology, I don't know if you guys checked your book already, there's a, there's one, um, you know, the first thing you do, you see is epidemiology and pathophysiology, right?
Yes, yes.
So after I read the whole chapter, I would go back to the pa- pathophysiology and spend my time understanding how that disease works.
Makes.
Because that's gonna be your, that's gonna be your foundation. And then after you read and understand how that disease works, you can go straight to your assess, your ad pi, assessment, diagnosis, intervention, teaching and evaluation. Because those are the things that they will um, um, test you on. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Those things that you will ask yourself, is this question is an assessment question? Is this question an intervention, intervention question? So to summarize that, I would say, read the whole chapter, go back to the pathophysiology, and then read the ad pi, the assessment, those kind of stuff. And if you have more time, then I would read the medical diagnosis.
Sorry.
Like the actual.
I didn't mean to. My my screen keeps cutting in and out. I feel bad because the internet, I'm like, oh, God, I feel like I'm interrupting. I feel bad. With the chapters, it's, you would suggest pretty much every single chapter that has to do, like, say, with the subject apart, right? Like with Hoffman, you know how it has like the whole cardiac chunk? You know what I'm talking? It starts with that, and then it goes into the EKGs, and then it goes into all the different types of disorders. You'd suggest reading much all of that, huh?
Um, for that one, I would go to your course. Do you have a course objective?
We don't have it from our actual teacher yet. We're just going off the old syllabus for now, just to kind of do what we can.
Got it. So, um, let's see.
I don't know. Um, I know she's emailed him, but I don't know if he's, he's probably thinking, nobody's gonna be doing this over this summer. Like, why would they die? Gluttons for punishment, right? But yeah. I could not imagine memorizing all of this in eight weeks. I would have died. Like, I'm so glad I started now. I mean, I I would have died, like, seriously.
It's hard. Um, I have a course content that I could probably send you guys.
Well, that would be amazing. Thank you so much.
This is how, this is what I studied for Med Search one. I follow the course content.
Yeah.
But I, and I don't want to say just, just um, solely depend on the, on the course content. I would seriously read the whole chapter.
Oh, yes.
No matter how fast, oh, sorry, no matter how fast can you read it? Because you need to read the whole chapter. Doesn't matter if you, you spend less time on, you know, the pathophysiology or anywhere else, but you have to read the whole chapter. And then go to your course content that I'm, I'll be sending you. Um, and see if those course contents are a bunch of um, objectives. And see, you read one objective and see if you know the answer. And if you know it, yep, and then go to the next one. And if you see an objective that you don't know, then go back to the book and say, okay, this is where I need to read, you know, more.
That makes a lot of sense. I completely forgot about course content. I'm like, oh, God, that again, no, another like eighty page document.
Yeah, right?
It was always.
Whoa, what else? So yeah, so that's how I do it. Read the chapter, go back to the pathophysiology, and then focus on the ad pi, assessment, diagnosis, intervention, teaching.
Thank you so much. That is super duper helpful. You have no idea. Oh, my gosh. Thank you. Is there anything else you want to add? I think that's about it. That was just great. I had no idea. Super. Oh, do you uh, mind everybody having your email? Do you want me to put that on blast in the groups? That cool? Okay, then I'll send that to everybody and let them know that they can contact you personally. Because I'm sure you can, you can answer a billion questions. You're so smart. So, you know, and so nice. So thank you so much, as always.
Yeah, no problem, guys. Like, I I'm always here for y'all. So they can email me, anyone can email me.
Thank you so much. I'm sure to send that down to them then as well. Thanks, Mike.
But yeah, I would say my last piece, piece of advice would be, um, um, know how to time manage. And when I say know how to time manage, you have to allot time for you to rest. Because if you don't rest, it's not gonna work out. I'm telling you.
Yeah.
I would, I would study twenty-four hours, no kidding, twenty-four hours. And then on the, and I noticed my exams are worse. I don't want to say worse. I'm just gonna say my exams are better when I have good sleep, or at least six hours of sleep. You know what I mean?
Oh, I told.
But um, how I did it, I study for like two hours, I would say, and then have a thirty-minute break. And then what I do is I study for another two hours. But before that second two-hour session that I would do, I would test myself on the stuff that I read two hours ago.
Oh, that's smart. That's smart.
Yeah, because if you read, if you read the same thing over and over again, your brain would tell you, oh, I already know this. No, you know this because you're reading it. Well, what I would do, I would read it for two hours, rest for thirty minutes, or do whatever I want. You know, I would eat, you know, whatever I wanted, get a margarita or shit, but.
Yeah, you need one.
After that, is is it okay on the recording?
Don't even worry about it. I know. I'm always like, I have to behave myself. I'm the worst too, so you know. It's all good.
Three minutes, I would go back to um, the topic that I've been reading, but I'm not gonna read it again. I'm gonna like make myself some questions and see if I could answer it. That kind of stuff, right? And then that's when you know that you don't know everything.
Yeah.
Because you're not reading. Because what I would do before, I would read for two hours, take, have a rest, go back, read again, over and over again. And then I would tell myself, oh, my God, I've been reading the whole stuff. I've been reading the whole thing. I already know this. And boom, on the day of the exam, I'll be like, I don't know anything.
Oh, my gosh. I talked about, yeah.
Well, that's, that's a good tip. Um, read and then test yourself.
Okay. Do you have any resources? I know a lot of us were coming up with um, a lot of different types of resources. They were like pathophys, flashcards. I've I've seen so many resources. Is, was there any particular resource that you just loved, that you fell in love with, that was just your go-to? Help you think your way through this? Um.
Um, okay, I, for Med Search one, I bought um, the Med Search success book.
Med Search success, okay. Okay.
But, but you have to to know that you you're not gonna buy that because you wanna um, know the content, because it's not gonna teach you how, it's not gonna teach you content. It's gonna teach you how to answer the exam. You know, it's gonna give you advice. It's gonna give you some tricks, how to answer exams. So that's the only reason why I bought that. But I solely rely on information from Hoffman.
Okay, so it's really strongly Hoffman then. That's the way to know, really.
Hoffman and the drug book.
And the drug book, yeah. Yep, that one's important. And then I know Professor Dickinson about had a heart attack when the news sheets didn't have peak and drop on them. And so it created one that does. She's like, why is that not out there? I'm assuming is greatly important. So I have so much respect for her. She was like, if you're willing to stay after class, I will explain this book to you, because I was struggling so bad with that Davis drug guide. I don't know what it was. It was, because you know, it's like all over the place when you first look at it. And I'm like, really? And she spent almost two hours explaining that to me. I I was so, so, and still am so grateful, because now I understand how to use it. Because I was like, I can't find anything in here. And everyone's like, this is the greatest book. And I'm like, someone please help me. I can't find anything. It's like, oh, it's under classifications. Got it. You actually have to know something to find something. Got it, got it. Like, learning as you go.
Yeah, the drug book could be confusing at times, so.
What was that?
The drug book is, the drug book can be confusing at times too.
Oh, I know, right? But it does have some really good charts. Like, I loved, I don't know if you noticed, um, you guys had Taylor for one-on-one, right? The Taylor, the Taylor book?
Yes, Taylor book.
Lot awful, two thousand page book. Anyways, so brought you, oh, my word. Anyways, but um, yeah, no. You know, the Taylor book didn't really go into the foods that much, like potassium.
No.
Or stuff. It was like this tiny little paragraph, like with like three examples. And then if you look in the drug guide, it's like, boom, like this big list of all the different foods, all organized, nice and neat in the back. And I was like, yes, like this is where it's at. This is so helpful. Like, when you finally realize that stuff's in there, it's like, oh, my gosh, where has this been all my life?
Yeah. Um, I think also another um, thing you have to learn about is acid-base.
Yes, actually, that's important. That's um, definitely on the menu. Yes. What would, what would be your best advice? ABGs, right?
What's up?
Uh, sorry, I know it's kind of cutting in and out. Uh, acid-base and ABGs. I haven't had a chance to study the ABGs yet. But yeah, anything you want to throw in about that too?
Um, acid-base, it's mostly knowledge-based, to be honest.
Yeah.
So memorize. It's not gonna be a lot of critical thinking for acid-base, so you have to know your numbers, unfortunately.
That's okay.
But um, I think good thing about acid-base would be know the concept that, know the concept of basic and acidic.
Yes.
I think that will be your foundation concept. If you know what's the difference of a basic compound or a basic state.
Yes.
And, you know, an acidic state, you know, you will be okay, to be honest.
Good to know. And with ABGs, um, arterial blood gases, I I don't know. I haven't had a chance to read about it yet, so I don't even know what I'm asking. But um, I know a lot of people talk about it. I know we need to know it. It's, I mean, I know of it, but I'm like, I'm not sure what's coming up with Med Search. Any advice on, on that at all? Regardless, I don't even know what we're walking into. Do we have to know how to draw them or something? It looked like there was something in there about that, but I'm not sure what. Did you freeze, Mikey? Oh, no, no, I did not lose you. If you can still hear me, I'm still here. No, computer, no. No. What does this always happen? Can you still hear? My God, I'm so sorry. That happened last week too. I was like, for real? Like, I'm in the middle of stuff. Oh, come on, internet. It just goes down. And I'm just like, please, please, like, I know last time I was just praying that I didn't lose everything on the other end. So thank goodness Zoom saves it, like dies and just resurrects it. I'm just gonna sit here. What do you think? About ABGs, before we got so rudely interrupted. Wifi.
All right. ABG is um, the same as acid-base. Um, you were go, you're going to talk about oxygen, carbon dioxide.
Okay.
And bicarbonate in your blood.
And we're supposed to draw them, right? You have to draw them. Do you have to draw them a certain way? Is there anything specific?
In the animal valley, we don't do ABGs.
Oh, we don't?
We don't draw them, but we analyze them.
Oh, got it.
The RT usually draws ABGs, and then as soon as they draw it, and then the, they're sent to the lab, then, you know, we interpret, not interpret, but we analyze.
So.
We analyze the.
We're just gonna look at the numbers, and that's the most important thing, you know, is that, oh, just like you said, just like you already said, just know the numbers.
I'm telling you, the numbers, that's it.
First time, gosh, could have saved us like five minutes of asking questions. Sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's the numbers. You have to know if this number is acidic or basic. That's it.
Oh, that, oh, that's not that bad. That's actually not that bad. And and understanding it, do they really, um, I know some people were like, oh, that's so hard. And I was a little surprised, but I wasn't sure if they were just getting confused by, you know, what makes an acid and what makes a base. Like, probably just the whole.
I think a lot of um, inputs, but um, quick rundown, if you see CO2, it means it um, it's associated to your breathing, so it's gonna be respiratory. But if you see bicarbonate, it's gonna be associated with your metabolic.
Oh.
So, yeah, so CO2 would be respiratory, and then bicarbonate would be metabolic.
Beautiful.
Those kinds of stuff. I think those are the only ones that would um, can make people confused.
I get it. Yeah, I was, yeah, I talked to some people that graduated and they were like, oh, watch out for this. And I was like, really? Like, because that was the one thing that I felt like I understood a little more. And I was like, oh, God, what am I walking into? There's like a big bear trap waiting for me or something on the other end of that. So it's good to know.
Yeah, but that's the thing, like, you want to know the number and the symptoms too, because um, but but like I said, if you know what happens if a person is, you know, under a, an acidic um, state or a basic state, you would be fine, you know? Like, you should know that if a person is um, acidic, they will be needing oxygen.
Yeah.
And if you, if your patient is in a basic um, state, they have too much oxygen per se.
Right.
In their blood. Yeah.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Well, Mikey, is there anything else you'd like to contribute to this madness and mayhem? Any other questions? Any words of encouragement of survival you'd like to donate?
You guys made it through first semester, and I think that's enough reason for you guys to know that you will be graduating as registered nurses. Because first semester is one of the hardest semesters you will, you could ever have.
Horribly.
That's first, your first semester in associate degree of nursing would be harder than your masters, to be honest.
I'm gonna be straight with you. I have taken masters level classes. I'm four classes short of a masters degree in education. And this is the hardest thing I've ever done.
And right?
One. I was like, y'all need to understand, like, this is like doctor-level work. Like, this is not a joke. Like, it's not a. One. I was like, y'all need to understand, like, this is like doctor-level work. Like, this is not a joke. Like, it's not a joke.
And you know what? Sometimes there are times that you, you would be like, "Why are they doing this? Like, this is too much. Like, this is too much burden," you know what I mean? But you know what? I just realized it after graduating. I'm grateful that we were like that, because it gave me an edge from the normal student nurses in the hospital. Like, for example, in Combeville, to be honest, if they know that you're from Animal Valley College, they know you're good. They know that you know your stuff.
Yeah.
So it's a reprieve that we carry. So just if you're feeling, you know, down, and, and you feel like this is too much, be grateful. Be grateful it's too much, because the professors are giving you so much trust that they know that you can do it. And you can do it. I mean, I did it, you know? And okay, if you think I'm that good, which I'm not, people that did it before me too, so that's not an excuse now.
I know, I feel you. You're super smart. And you're totally right. And I remember there was stuff that I was learning. I was like, "Oh my gosh, this cannot be part of Nursing 101," and technically, it was kind of like not, but it was like a precursor and a nice segue into MedSurg. And once I started studying for MedSurg, I was like, "I am so glad they made us learn this then, because now I have like a foundation to build on now to the next level." So you start to see it as you go, and, and yeah, you're right. Absolutely be grateful, because yeah, it's hard, but, but it's worth it, and at the end, it's gonna make us all that much better. So one hundred and ten percent. So thank you for that.
And I think last one would be, yeah, I think my last tip would be, don't ever, um, be afraid to ask questions. You know, to your peers, to your professors. Um, Mr. Goldman is really nice, and he's very receptive of students. So pick his brain. Pick his damn brain. His brain is gold. I'm telling you.
That is so exciting, cause I am a question-asker. As you well know. So that is really, really good news.
Yeah, I don't know if he has a master's degree, but, yeah, go ahead.
No, what was that? Go ahead.
Yeah, like, I don't know if Mr. Goldman has a masters degree, but I think he should have a masters degree for him to teach, lecture. So he should have a masters degree, but he's a damn genius. He's smart. He's so smart.
That is so exciting. That is great. And super encouraging too, because, yeah, I, that's gonna be very helpful. Thank you so much, again.
No problem, guys.
All right, everybody. So is anything else you wanna throw in, Mikey? You good?
I think that's it.
So much mad respect to you right now.
No problem. You, you guys are all welcome. Swear.
Thank you so much. So everybody, I'm gonna send you guys Mikey's email. You can pick his brain, and he is awesome and brilliant, like I said, as you can see. And, um, again, Mikey, thank you for taking the time. You are amazing, and you're gonna make an amazing nurse. I look forward to seeing you in there doing an awesome job. And I will end the little. What was that?
Study smart and do not give up. You guys can do this.
Oh, thank you so much. And you are gonna be an amazing nurse again. So thank you so much. And I will stop this recording right now.